Good afternoon and evening, everybody. This is our June 26 regular meeting of the Mason County Commission. It's our call to order. Madam Monitor, would you please do us the honor of leading us in the punctual allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rule call, please.
Commissioner District One, Randy Netherland.
I'm here.
Commissioner District Two, Kevin Schutie.
Here.
Commissioner District Three, Terry Drexler.
Here.
Item number four, correspondence organizational business. Do we have correspondence to come before this board?
Yes, I have seven items. So, the United States Department of the Interior Bureau of Indian Affairs sent a notice of application filed by the Skokomish Island Tribe to have real property accepted in trust for parcel Washington State Liquor and Cannabis Board sent liquor license applications for Faith in Action, 111 Northeast Old Belfair Highway in Belfair, Allen Community Association, 18560, Washington III, and Union City Market, 5101, East State Route 106. Olympic Clean Air Agency, ORCA, sent notification that Mason County's clean air contribution for 2019 is $41,925.30. United States Department of Homeland Security's Federal Emergency Management Agency, or FEMA, Region 10, approved the Mason County Hazard Mitigation Plan. Raymond Lee Olson sent in a Housing and Behavioral Health Advisory Board application. United Way of Mason County sent a letter requesting support for the 2018 United Way Day of Caring, and Christina Williams submitted an application for the Mason County Historic Preservation Commission.
Thank you. Is there any other correspondence organizational business to come before this body?
No.
Thank you very much. Item number five, open forum for citizens' input. This is your opportunity to speak to the commission on any item that, regarding any item that is not on the agenda. If it's on the agenda, we ask that you hold off, wait, and you'll be given an opportunity to ask us questions or testify at that time. So, if it is not on the agenda and you have something you'd like to discuss, we ask that you raise your hand, be recognized by the chair, we'll have you come up, say your name and perhaps where you're from, and we'll recognize you at that time. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak on any item that is not on the agenda? I was afraid of that. We have a hearing that we're not going to be able to get to until exactly 6:30, so if anybody has anything to say, now's a great time. All right. Hearing none, we'll move over to item number six, which is the adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I move the adoption of the agenda as presented.
Second.
It's been moved in second for the adoption of the agenda as presented. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. The motion carries. And I forgot to mention Commissioner Schutie is on the telephone. For anybody that hasn't caught that on yet. Let's see. Item number seven, approval of the minutes.
Mr. Chair, I move the...
Mr. Chair.
Yes. Go ahead, Commissioner Schutie.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of the June 18, 2018 briefing minutes.
Well, second.
It has been moved in second for the approval of the June 2000, June 18, 2018 briefing minutes. Is there any additions or subtractions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 The motion carries. Next up is item number eight, which is our approval of the action agenda. All items listed under the action agenda may be enacted by one motion unless a commissioner or a citizen asks for the item to be removed from the action agenda and considered as a separate item. With that being said, we will read each of the items to you. We'll give you an opportunity to ask us a question that would help you decide if you want it taken off for a separate vote. If you want to testify, it needs to be taken off for a separate vote. So, if you don't mind, if you will read item number 8.1 and 8.2, I will read three, four, five, and six.
Mr. Chair, item 8.1, approval to execute the resolution setting a hearing date with the hearings examiner for Wednesday, July 25, 2018, to consider public comment on the proposed vacation of a proportion of West Kuklum Road. 8.2, approval to award $375,875 from the local 2163 and 2160 document recording fees and enter into contracts for a one-year term with the following agencies beginning July 1, 2018. Of 2163 monies, $49,500 to Turning Point for domestic violence shelter. Of 2060 monies, $50,000, and 2163 monies, $63,705 to Community Lifeline and Adult Shelter. 2163 monies, $179,670 to Crossroads Housing, Family Shelter, Transitional Housing, Coordinated Entry, and Rapid Rehousing, and $33,000 to North Mason Resources for coordinated entry in the North Mason area.
And just for those in the audience, the host one was stricken for the moment because they're still working on the contract. Item number 8.3, approval of the 2018 through 2019 Juvenile Detention Alternative Initiative Grant, application contract number I-501-00812, in the amount of $24,500. Item number 8.4, approval of a contract number K2751 between Mason County and the Washington State Healthcare Authority for the access to baby and child dentistry, A-B-C-D program. Item number 8.5, approval of the ordinance creating Mason County Lake Management Districts, number two, for the Mason Lake, and set a public hearing on Tuesday, July 24, 2018, at 6:30 PM to hear objections to the role of rates and charges. Item number 8.6, approval of the resolution for the distribution of the Public Utility District Estate Tax per RCW 54.28.090. The Mason County Current Expense Fund will receive $735,000, $34,620.43, and the city of Shelton will receive $82,020.51. Now, these items have been read to you. Is there any question that you may have to help you decide whether to have something taken off for a separate vote? There are no questions. Is there any items that are on the action agenda that you would like taken off for a separate vote because you would like to testify? Commissioners, do you have any items you'd like taken off?
No.
No, Mr. Chair.
Okay. I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move the approval of items 8.1 through 8.6 on today's action agenda.
Second.
It's been moved in second for the approval of the action agenda as presented, items 8.1 through 8.6. Any further discussion or comment? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 The motion carries. The action agenda is approved. Are there any? We'll move on to item number nine, other business, department heads and elected officials. Are there any department heads or elected officials who would like to speak at this Hearing none. We'll go ahead and we'll begin with our calendar. Commissioner Schutie, would you like to begin?
Yes, Mr. Chair, and unfortunately, I don't think I'm going to be very much help here in drawing the timeout. I will be out of the office the remainder of this week and back for briefings on Monday.
Okay. And just a reminder, if we do go through this quickly, we can take an intermission and come back at 6:30. Commissioner Drexler.
So, Monday, yesterday evening, I had the opportunity to attend the Behavioral Health Organization Advisory Board meeting, which was being held here in Shelton. We have four representatives on that board. That meeting coincided with, I might say collided with, the news that we all had that Western State Hospital has lost their federal licensure, and they will no longer be taking Medicaid-funded patients in civil commitments, which we, wasn't a total surprise that they wouldn't be doing that because they haven't been taking 37 of our reserved beds for quite some time. But what it does do is highlight something that we've known for a long time, that the treatment of people, their behavioral health disorders, especially in involuntary setting, is going to more and more be the responsibility of our local communities and, to some level, the counties. And so, it just kind of heightened that. That took a lot of the conversation, as well as the good news that we're almost there on starting construction of our own treatment center here in Mason County, and the announcement that we have applied for a contract to refurbish the second floor of this building on Third and Coda to be a long-term care facility for involuntary care, and that long-term care meaning up to 180 days. Today, I met with, let's see, today I met with the Mason County Journal on those very topics, as well as some issues around outdoor burning here, we recently had in here in the county, and then did a lot of office work tomorrow. I will be meeting with our new Economic Development Director, Jennifer Byer. I will be attending a conference or a meeting workshop on workforce labor transput on the Pacific Mountain First Workforce Development Council, and then I'll be meeting with a constituent tomorrow on, I think, on social service delivery here in Mason County. The Lewis Mason Thurston Area Agency on Aging, and then Thursday evening, and I promised a constituent to announce this, and I will be in attendance too, the Department of Natural Resources will be having a public information hearing on their proposal to create a national resource conservationary area of 1,500 acres up in the Duwato Bay area, and they're having one right now, tonight, in Belfair, and they'll be having a second public meeting at the Port of Duwato, and I'm to share that your MapQuest and/or Google Maps is somewhat incorrect in getting you there, but it's on northeast Duwato Bay Road, the Port of Duwato. Then, I will be taking some personal time on Friday, and then back here for briefings on Monday.
Okay, I had, we all had the Mason Transit Authority meeting together. I also had a meeting with the Audit Committee, Greatview School Board Member. I met with representatives of DNR, attended the Legal Women Voters Annual Meeting. Amateur radio, people don't realize they are kind of the backbone of our emergency management, and they had a celebration out in Belfair this week. But understand, if anything ever happens, they are your last resort. You will not have your regular radios, you will not have your cell phones, you won't have any of the things that you can imagine. We had in 2007 the misfortune of having some of our people cut off, and they were, that was the only communications that they had up in North Mason, the Tuahua-Duwato Bay area, some of those were literally cut off for like seven days. So, with that, we just wanted to say thank you to them for all the things that they do. Also attended a Relay for Life in Kitsap County, and it was a shame, I saw a lot of people that were normally from here, but we don't longer have one in North Mason. Food and Fellowship briefing, North Mason Community Voice meeting last night, and I met today with the Boy Scouts in regards to some property and some things up in that Duwato area. North Mason Chamber of Commerce luncheon tomorrow, Community Action Executive Board meeting that I'm taking on with you, Debbie Riley's retirement, I also will be at the DNR meeting in Duwato. Kickoff for the Belfair Parade, for Christmas, I know it's early, but they are doing it now to get over some of the issues they're going to have. I want to point out that this Saturday, at 7 o'clock, at Sand Hill Ball Field, there is going to be a vigil for Donna Sullivan. It's a name that you may not know, and that's one of the reasons why we're having the vigil. This lady was beat to death by her husband, and the sad part is, when people started asking, nobody knew her. So, the fact that we had somebody from our community that had been there for several months and nobody knew what was going on, nobody knew anything, and she didn't know the connections to make for the services that we have, we are going to have a vigil to make sure that her name is said over and over again, and she receives the respect and recognition that she should have had when she was with us. So, you are all invited to attend. You'll be given opportunities, anybody that has stories, not just of her or about her, but about domestic violence as a whole, Turning Point and other organizations like that will be there. If you are having problems at home, or you have any issues at home, this is also an opportunity for you to go, and there will be people there that can help you. So, please know that that is happening, and everybody is invited, and we hope that you all will come. We come back for our briefings. I have a Port of Allen meeting that night, and a Left Board meeting, and I don't want to close this part without saying that the conversation that Commissioner Drexler brought up about the local treatment, I want to point out that Commissioner Drexler has been a driving force for the opportunity of having that treatment right here in Mason County. With that being said, we're still 11 minutes off. If nobody has an objection, we will take an intermission for 10 minutes and come back.
No objections.
Hearing none. We are in intermission. All right, we are back in session, and we are opening up the public hearing. This is a public hearing, let me go back to the thing here, to consider approval of supplemental appropriations and budget transfer requests to the 2018 budget. Are you speaking on behalf of it? We will have Jennifer, our staff, speaking first.
Hi, Commissioners. I'm Jennifer Byerly with Mason County Support Services, and this is a public hearing to consider approval of supplemental appropriations and budget transfer requests to the 2018 budget. Am I speaking loudly enough?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry. Kevin, can you hear her?
Kevin?
Kevin, can you hear me?
I can.
Can you hear her at all?
I can.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. The following are the supplemental appropriations. $644,255 increase to current expense non-departmental revenue for road internal allocation, and increase to current expense ending fund balance. $34,000 increase to Belfair Sewer Fund 413 revenue for Belfair Sewer feasibility study, and increase to Fund 413 professional services expense. $38,650 increase to sheriff revenue for various private contracts, and increase to Mason County Sheriff's Office overtime expenses. $2,500 increase to juvenile services revenue for JDAI and grant increase, and increase to juvenile services various expense accounts. $24,565 increase to criminal justice treatment account in therapeutic court for funding from DSHS, and increase to therapeutic court's various expense accounts. $104,737 increase to current expense non-departmental revenue for community development block grant, and increase to current expense non-departmental expense. $231,334.50 increase to REIT II for Recreation and Conservation Office Grant, and increase to REIT II Capital Outlays expense. $506,000 increase to County Road for Recreation and Conservation Office Grant, and increase to various other existing grants, and increase to capital and professional services expenses. $290,000 increase to Skokomish Flood Zone Fund 192 for increased funding from Mason Conservation District, and increase to various expense accounts. $207,235 increase to Storm Drain System Development for Department of Ecology Grant Funds, and increase to various expense accounts and ending fund balance. The total supplemental requests for current expense and special funds are $2,083,276.50. The budget transfer requests are as follows. Landfill Reserve Fund 428, transfer from ending fund balance $30,000 to Landfill Reserve Miscellaneous Contracted Professional Services, $30,000. Belfair Sewer Fund 413, transfer from ending fund balance $66,000 to Belfair Sewer Professional Services and Miscellaneous, $66,000. Auditors O&amp;M Fund 104, transfer from ending fund balance $2,050 to Auditors O&amp;M Medical Dental Vision in Life, $1,907.50, and to Auditors O&amp;M Reserve for Technology, $142.50. Current expense, transfer from ending fund balance, $31,000, excuse me, $31,950 to Auditor Medical Dental Vision in Life, $6,500, to Human Resources Medical Dental Vision in Life, $8,000, to Clerk Medical Dental Vision in Life, $6,100, to Treasurer Various Salaries and Benefits Lines, $5,050, to Commissioners State Retirement, $3,600, to Assessor Medical Dental Vision in Life, $2,700. Veterans Assistance Fund 190, transfer from transfers out, $50,000, to Mental Health Tax Fund 164, $50,000. Veterans Assistance Fund 190, transfer from transfers out, $50,000, to Community Support Services Fund 117, $50,000. Law Library Fund 160, eliminate transfer from transfers out, $4,940, to Support Services, $4,940. Law Library Fund 160, transfer from ending fund balance, $4,940, to Law Library Various Salary and Benefits, $4,940. Facilities and Grounds, transfer from transfers out, $6,830.47, to Historical Preservation Fund 116, $6,830.47. Facilities and Grounds, transfer from transfers out, $10,000, to Community Support Services Fund 117, $10,000. Sheriff, transfer from ending fund balance, $55,090, to Sheriff Enterprise Payments, $34,403, to Sheriff ER&amp;R Upfit and Downfits, $20,687. Sheriff Special Funds 140, transfer from ending fund balance, $1,380.16, to Sheriff Special Funds SAR Van tires, $1,380.16. Current expense, transfer from ending fund balance, $1,007,831, to Auditor Various Salary and Benefit Lines, $20,828, to Auditor Various Expense Lines, $13,700, to Treasurer Various Salary and Benefit Lines, $31,003, to Clerk Various Salary and Benefit Lines, $42,300. Current expense, transfer from ending fund balance, $70,000, to accrued leave Various Salary and Benefit Lines, $70,000. County Road Fund 105, transfer from ending fund balance, $311,000, to County Road Fund Professional Services Line, $311,000. The total transfer requests are $802.1163. Any questions on any of those?
Thank you. Is there anybody in the audience that has any questions for staff in regards to anything that she just read? Commissioners, any questions?
Not for me.
Okay, then if you don't mind, we are going to move into public testimony. Thank you very much. Is there anybody who would like to testify at this time? Anybody would like to testify? Yes. Madam Monitor.
Good evening. Karen Herr, County Auditor, and I just wanted to address the board and explain my request for a budget supplement. Since the beginning of last year, my budget was reduced by $193,250, approximately 13%. I lost a full-time position in licensing and recording, I lost a half-time in financial services, I lost most of my extra help in elections, and a fair amount of my operating funding. Now, based on some unanticipated revenues to current expense this year, I'm asking just for a fraction of that be restored into my budget, and I have three very specific reasons for this request. The first one is to restore the half-time position in financial services, whose primary responsibility was to audit and process warrants for 22 of the special purpose districts, and also to assist the overflow of warrants for the county departments. Left with only one employee to provide services for all of these services, we obviously had to reduce the number of warrant runs per month, and this has really impacted the special districts, and unfortunately, it has resulted in some numerous and continual late charges, not only for the special districts, but also the county districts. So, by restoring the half-time position, we could resume weekly warrant runs for the districts and regular timely warrant for the county department, and this would save both the county and the special districts money. My second reason was to, is to purchase prepaid envelopes for elections. King County recently adopted an ordinance that pays for ballot return postage for all of their residents. In turn, Governor Inslee and Secretary of State Wyman secured statewide funding for postage paid for the rest of the counties to ensure parity and consistency in elections throughout Washington State. That means that Mason County would receive approximately $18,000 from the state to provide our voters in Mason County the opportunity to mail their ballots in the mail, return them postage-free for both the primary and the general. If this helps improve our voter turnout, you know, I'm all for it. However, we have to purchase some prepaid envelopes that is not in the state grant, and it's not covered by the state grant, and I do not have the funding to do so. That's about $9,500. My third reason is due to some significant legislative changes for elections, and because we are rolling out a brand-new and much-needed ballot processing system for the primary, we need a little bit of help in elections. I need some training hours and also some extra help to help retrieve the ballots and to process ballots. So, $34,500 that I'm asking will really have some far-reaching benefits. It will definitely help improve and restore some of the vital services we provide the public, and also save the county money and also the special districts. So, I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. Any questions, Chairman? Is there anybody else that would like to testify? Yes, Madam Treasurer.
Good evening. I'm Lisa Frazier with Mason County Treasurer, and I would like to speak to my request in the supplemental budget as well. I won't get into numbers and details because I have the same sad story that the auditor has, but I am, the Treasurer's Office is struggling to keep up with the daily demands of the work that we're required to do daily, and so, we're falling way behind on those things that we need to do with regards to property tax refunds to our taxpayers and having enough staff to process property tax payments in April and October. It took us an additional week to get the property taxes posted, so we were into the second week of May, when normally we would be done three days after April 30th. It was almost a week and a half to process property tax payments without the extra help or staff support that we need to do that. That's at a cost to the county. Obviously, those funds are not being banked as quickly as possible, nor are we earning interest, and taxpayers were really confused as to why their checks weren't clearing and why we couldn't tell them whether we had their payments or not. I'm asking for $31,000 for the balance of 2018, which is a full-time position to help with issuing and redeeming warrants for all of those districts that the auditor doesn't cover and the counter, that would free up the staff again then to start working on property tax corrections and property tax payments. What I'm concerned about is, obviously, I'm asking for a small amount this year, but it doubles in the fact that I still need this position in 2019. So, it's an ongoing cost, I understand that, and nobody knows the financial state of the county almost as well as you do than me, but it's important that I have the ability to provide the services that are mandated by my office, so I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to testify at this time? Anybody else? Hearing nobody else, we will close the public testimony and move into Commissioner deliberations. Commissioners?
Thank you. I have a few brief comments to make, just generally on the supplemental requests that are before us. First off, I really appreciate the flexibility with allowing me to call in for tonight's meeting, which was an important one, and I wanted to make sure that I took the time to call in and be a part of the conversation. As far as, as far as the supplemental requests before us go, a lot of them are of the housekeeping variety. I think this is pretty standard fare for this time of year and counties across the state, and, you know, and I think a lot of them just come down to basic housekeeping transfers and some items like that. However, my concerns do go back to the increases in the salary and benefit lines, because those, anytime you increase staffing, you increase costs, that creates a bow wave. And the big question that follows that is how to address that in 2019. Here we are, six months removed from the adoption of a budget that we suspected or we were told would create a reduction in services in the various offices, and, you know, and I think it's difficult to have a supplemental that makes major program-level spending increases. and I think it's difficult to have a supplemental that makes major program-level spending increases at the staffing level when we should be using our supplemental budget to address unanticipated one-time emergency expenditures and, like I said, those housekeeping items. I fully believe that we should have staffing conversation in the context of the 2019 budget as we get that process underway here in the coming weeks, and weigh that against all of the programming needs in the county, especially given the reduction, again, in revenue that we're anticipating heading into the 2019 budget. You know, so I would, as I said, I think a lot of these items are certainly housekeeping-related, certainly well-intentioned and needed, and I do appreciate the auditor and treasurer and the clerk's office coming forward with these needs and advocating for their offices. I think that's critical as well. I would prefer to have those staffing conversations though in the context of the full 2019 budget as we weigh all of the county's programming needs at that time.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner?
Thank you. So, with the help of the budget staff, I did some pretty close analysis. What the public probably doesn't know is that the reason there are these added requests is because there was, there was income that should have been anticipated but wasn't put into the budget as part of our revenues. Had I known when we passed the 2018 budget that we had an extra $644,000, it could very much have changed the types of cuts we made that I would have voted to make. I think, having looked at what the additional cost will be in next year's budget of adding back the staff and accounting for the monies that weren't accounted in the 2018 budget, I'm looking at still an increase, not a lot, but still an increase of about $130,000 in revenues that we didn't account for in the 2018 budget by adding back the staff and the bow wave costs as Commissioner Shute calls them. Yes, it would be nice to have that breathing room, but I'm compelled to increase these staffing levels in these departments because I do know for a fact that these departments are bare bones, and these are some of the services closest to the public. They're not the sexiest ones, they're not the ones that get all the attention, they're not the ones that people will line up to testify in favor for, but they are, they are county business. They are the, the workhorse of what counties do, and it broke my heart to have to cut those staffing levels and to know that those monies were available and still have some, a little bit of breathing room in 2019. I am in favor of these. The others, I disagree that some of these costs that we are doing one-time costs could have been avoided. I think had there been a closer look at some contracts and some other things, then we would not be putting the money towards the sheriff's office, but I will vote for that because at some level, at some point, that's got to get paid for. Those I don't think should have been expected, and I hope that they'll read those contracts. We don't get to sign the contract that this one in particular is paying for, and so we didn't get to review what all the costs were, and it makes me very, very sad that now we're paying another $70,000 for information we didn't know at the time, or that somebody didn't bother looking at. I am in favor of this motion as stands.
Okay. We don't have a motion yet, though.
Oh, we don't? I'm in favor of the proposal, the recommended motion.
I, too, will be speaking in favor of it. I'm going to break down a little bit further a few things for the public that's out there in case anybody ever watches the video. You know, I read a lot of different things on Facebook about the huge budget that the county has, and people, I can assure you, are confused with the budget that the county has compared to what they pay in their tax. They honestly believe, for good reason, that all the tax, what they pay it in, they're paying it to the county because it goes to the treasurer. But what they don't know is that that treasurer is actually responsible for receiving the monies for everybody. You heard the term 22 special purpose districts. When you're talking about your ports, you're talking about your fire districts, you're talking about your school district, it all goes through right here, and I want to add, the county doesn't get paid special money for collecting all those things. The treasurer doesn't get anything special because we've talked about perhaps going out for a percent, just 1% to go towards the county. I want to remind everybody that the county is really structured in what they can do for receiving funds. They can raise it by 1% above what it was the year before. Now, so with that being said, I want to remind the public, not only do you have a treasurer's office, which is absolutely, more than important, it is mandated by the state for a purpose, this is your fiduciary person responsible as the bank for everybody. Then you have the assessor's office, and I can assure you, even though people want to put out statutes and say certain things about the assessor, you sure appreciate them if you're only paying your fair share of the tax and not paying for somebody else's because their department went to your house, did their homework, and found that your home is only valued at this much, so you only pay this much. Granted, we'd all like to pay less, but if you didn't have somebody doing it fair, I can assure you, you'd be screaming a lot louder at certain individuals. And again, this is a state-mandated function that collects money for everybody, but they have to do the work right here at the county for all of them. Now you have the auditor's office. We all want fair and free elections, but that's not all the auditor does. When you go to record your property transactions or you go to record any of these documents that are so important to you that you have to go to court for, all that has to go through the auditor's office. But then, people don't realize that the auditors actually also are, in a sense, are accountant for everything. That's where all the bills come out of. So, if you want to be able to pay your law enforcement officers, it's going to go through the auditor's office. If there's mistakes and you don't have enough staff, it's going to happen at the auditor's office. And as we saw just recently, we had a group of fire departments and other entities come in begging us to please do something because the action that is happening now because they're so short-staffed, it is costing them money that they can't afford to give. Now, aside from all this at the county, I want to point out for everybody out there in the world here, you also have your sheriff's department. Everybody knows how big and how important that is and how badly we need it. But now, everybody that they touch costs the county more money. When you hear the term "the people versus," it's the county versus. Your tax money that you give specifically to the county covers most of this stuff, and I'll give you an example, but right now, just think about the jail or the sheriff's office and everybody that they have to touch and all the people they have. Everybody they touch ends up having to go through a court system. That's a whole nother system within your county that has to be paid for through the county, except for the judge's salaries, part of them get paid for by the state. But other than that, that whole judicial system, including a clerk's office, which is a whole nother elected official's office, but without that clerk's office, nothing can run. Now, after that, remember, not every time that you, that they touch them, somebody else has to touch them, like the prosecuting attorney's office. Again, that's within your county budget. You pay for that here. Now, if you prosecute them, here in Mason County, 87% of them ends up having to be defended as well. So, that, again, is Mason County paying for that. So, now, not only are you prosecuting and defending them, now you've got to house them. And so, remember, that's more money that comes up. You have a coroner's department at the county that's absolutely necessary for many different reasons, and let's hope you never have to use it. But then, let's talk about another department in here called the health department. When you go to get something to eat at your restaurant, you sure like to believe that it's, that it's clean, it's good. You'd also like to know that your water's safe to drink, or that your tides are not contaminated out there, so our shellfish industry doesn't fall apart. You have your building department that is absolutely necessary to both bring in revenue so we don't have to have more taxes because they allow for the building to occur, but they also make sure, for your safety, to make sure that we're able to build and build houses and buildings that don't collapse on people. Emergency management is also part of the same, part of the budget that I'm talking about. The county separated with our road funds, which is set up by the state. That's not us that made that decision. And then you have your, your central funds, the ones that we're talking about now, current expense. So, everything I've mentioned, now also remember we have emergency management. Now, remember we have IT. Now, remember all the parks you see. Now, also remember all the facilities and the buildings you have out there. And the reason why I'm telling you all this is because your county does everything I just mentioned for less money and a smaller budget than the North Mason School District. As a matter of fact, the Shelton School District, you would have to increase your county budget by 75% to get as much as they did. We do a lot here with this county, with this budget, and it's hard. When you see that a department is failing because we can't do it anymore and we've cut more than we could have in that particular department, they still have to do their business or everything else falls apart. The state makes rules that we have to follow. We are the arm of the state. Next year, we're going to be faced with a $500,000 deficit because they just changed a new law that says that we can't go after indigent people anymore for their funds at the courts. That's going to cost the county another $500,000. We spent about $1 million for public defense. What'd they give us, $90,000? Thank you, State of Washington. I'm telling you all this because this is not an easy decision, but when you have a decision to make, you have to make sure that all the pieces run. So, please, out there in this room, I understand we want to fill the room in regards to taking care of one particular entity, but these entities are just as important, and without them, we all fail. So, that's my soapbox, and I'll be stepping off it now, but I will be in support of a motion if somebody is open to making one.
Mr. Chair, I would like to move to approve the following supplemental appropriations and budget transfers to the 2018 budget. A $644,255 increase to current expense non-departmental revenue for road internal allocation and increase to current expense ending fund balance. $34,000 increase to Belfair Sewer Fund revenue to Belfair Sewer feasibility study and increase to Fund 413 professional services expense. $38,650 increase to sheriff revenue for various private contracts and increase to Mason County Sheriff's Office overtime expenses. $2,500 increase to juvenile services revenue for JDAI grant increase and increase to juvenile service various expense account. $24,565 increase to criminal justice treatment account and therapeutic court for funding from DSHS and increase to therapeutic court's various expense accounts. $4,737 increase to current expense non-departmental revenue for community development block grant and increase to current expense non-departmental expense. $231,334.50 increase to REIT II Fund 351 for recreational conservation office grant and increase to REIT II capital outlay expense. $506,000 increase to County Road Fund 105 for recreation and conservation office grant and increase to various other existing grants and increase to capital and professional service expenses. $290,000 increase to Comish Flood Zone Fund 192 for increased funding from Mason Conservation District and increase to various expense accounts. $207,235 increase to Storm Drain System Development Fund 480 for Department of Ecology Grant Funds and increase to various expense accounts and ending fund balance. Budget transfers include landfill reserve fund 425, 428, transfer from ending fund balance $30,000 to landfill reserve miscellaneous contracted services $30,000. Belfair Sewer Fund 413 transfer from ending fund balance $66,000 to Belfair Sewer Professional Services miscellaneous $66,000. Auditors O&amp;M Fund 104, transfer from ending fund balance $2,050 to Auditors O&amp;M Medical Dental Vision Life $1,907.50 to Auditors O&amp;M Reserve for Technology $142.50. Current expense fund 001.320, transfer from ending fund balance $31,950 to Auditor Medical Dental Vision Life $6,500 to Human Resources Medical Dental Vision Life $8,000 to the Clerk Medical Dental Vision Life $6,100 to Treasurer Various Salaries and Benefits $5,050 to the Commissioner State Retirement $3,600 to the Assessor Medical Dental Vision Life $2,700 to the Veterans Assistance Fund $190, transfer from and transfers out $50,000 to Mental Health Tax Fund $164, $50,000. Veterans Assistance Fund $190, transfer from, transfers out $50,000 to Community Support Services Fund $117, $50,000. Law Library Fund $160, 160, eliminate transfer from, transfers out $4,940 to Support Services Fund 001.090, $4,940. Law Library Fund $160, transfer from ending fund balance $4,940 to Law Library Various Salary and Benefits $4,940. Facilities and Grounds Fund 001.055, transfer from, transfer out $6,830.47 to Historical Preservation Fund 116, $6,830.47. Facilities and Grounds Fund 001.055, transfer from, transfers out $10,000 to Community Support Services Fund $117, $10,000. Sheriff 001.205, transfer from ending fund balance $55,090 to the Sheriff Enterprise Payments, $34,403 to the Sheriff ER&amp;R Upfits/Downfits, $20,687. Sheriff Special Funds 140, transfer from ending fund balance $1,380.16 to the Sheriff Special Funds SAR Van tires, $1,380.16. Current expense fund 001.320, transfer from ending fund balance $107,831 to the Auditor Various Salary and Benefit Lines, $20,828 to the Auditor Various Expense Lines, $13,700 to the Treasurer Various Salary and Benefit Lines, $31,003 to the Clerk Various Salary and Benefit Lines, $42,300. Current expense fund 001.320, transfer from ending fund balance $70,000 to accrued leave Various Salary and Benefit Lines, $70,000. County Road Fund 105, transfer from ending fund balance $311,000 to County Road Professional For a total budget impact, I think I need that. This will increase the ending fund balance current expense fund by $350,613.53. It'll decrease in ending fund balance Auditors O&amp;M, $2,050. It'll decrease in ending fund balance our County Road Fund by $311,000. It'll increase in ending fund balance of the Historic Preservation Fund, $6,830.47. It'll increase in ending fund balance the Community Support Services by $60,000. It'll decrease the ending fund balance of the Sheriff's Special Funds by $1,380.16. It'll increase in ending fund balance Mental Health Tax, $50,000. It'll decrease the ending fund balance of Veterans Assistance by $100,000. It'll decrease the ending fund balance of the Belfair Sewer by $66,000. It'll decrease the ending fund balance of our landfill reserve by $30,000 and will increase the ending fund balance of the Storm Drain System Development by $169,284.
Thank you, Madam Commissioner. Do I hear a second? I second. It has been moved and seconded for the approval of the following supplemental appropriations budget transfers to the 2018. On the bottom line of, I want to point out that the commissioner volunteered to read that out because we do have to read it for the record, so thank you very much, Commissioner. That was extremely well done, but I get to do the short version. The budget impacts will be $350,613.53 increase to the ending fund balance of current expense. Decrease in ending fund balance Auditors O&amp;M, $2,050. Decrease in ending fund balance County Road, $311,000. Increase to ending fund balance Historic Preservation, $6,830.47. Increase in ending fund balance Community Support Services, $60,000. Decrease in ending fund balance Sheriff's Special Funds, $1,380.16. Increase in ending fund balance Mental Health Tax, $50,000. Decrease in ending fund balance Veterans Assistance, $100,000. Decrease in ending fund balance Belfair Sewer, $66,000. Decrease in ending fund balance Landfill Reserve, $30,000. Increase in ending fund balance Storm Drain System Development, $169,284. So, with that being moved and seconded, is there further discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I just, if you could, I have a couple of comments to make.
Yes, please.
Mr. Chair, thank you, and again, I appreciate the comments of both Commissioners Netherland and Drexler on this issue. I think, you know, there are certainly good reasons to support some of the funding requests that were made in the supplemental budget presented tonight. However, my concerns do remain about 2019 and beyond in terms of... However, my concerns do remain about 2019 and beyond in terms of increasing staffing levels. And, you know, as I kind of thought about some of the issues that come with that, you know, in particular, some that were even mentioned tonight, such as the $500,000, potential $500,000 revenue loss in District Court due to legislation that was passed and funded a lot by the governor this year and other costs associated with collective bargaining agreements that are already adopted and some that are already being, or that are currently being negotiated. You know, I come back to the thought that when you can't control revenue, you have to control costs. And to the extent possible, you know, I think we should hold the line on increasing staffing as that creates the, as that creates a bow wave heading into 2019 and beyond. One of the interesting things that have kind of came out of tonight's conversation around these requests, again, you know, has been the sheriff's office and some of their requests and whether or not those could have been avoided or not. And, you know, I came into office in 2017 after, which I believe up until last year, you know, there had been increases in that department's budget by 44% or so. I remember seeing that throughout 2016 and heading into 2017, and, you know, and I, we can't continue with this binge and purge kind of budgeting where six months after adopting a budget, we increase staffing, which is our biggest cost. And so while I do appreciate the needs of the special and junior taxing districts, while I do appreciate the needs in the treasurer and auditor's office, clerk's office, and those offices that came forward with those requests, I just think that in the spirit of trying to stay ahead of our decreasing revenue, that we should hold the line for the next six months on those. And so with that, I will conclude my remarks.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner?
I think there's some policy things in here that are worth noting. One is that we, as a county and as the therapeutic courts, decided to take on the contracting of our, something called the Criminal Justice Treatment Account monies, which supports the therapies for the people in our therapeutic courts, and that's one of these increases. We've gotten some recreational conservation office monies come forward, grant monies, and those are increases here in our ability to provide expanded services. And then also, we have some monies, we're doing some work, which is this Comish GI work out, general investigation work with Army Corps of Engineer. We had a huge amount of match monies required from the state or from the county to federal work out there in this Comish Valley, and we kind of held our fingers crossed throughout this whole process that the state would help us with that, and some of them, and they have come through and the initial parts of our match on that, and that's what some of these revenue increases are and then the corresponding expenses. So we've spoken a lot tonight about a little bit of money and some staffing increases, but I do want to not acknowledge some of the other hard work that had gone on to bring in new monies to the county to do the work of the county.
And back onto the positions one more time a little bit. I just want to say thank you and point out a few more things again. You know, Madam Assessor, I am sorry that there was nothing here on that. Your department does a lot of great work, and I want to give you a thank you for all the work that you do and all that you put out of your own time these days because the budgets are so small. Madam Treasurer, I know that you have been spending time up in the front counter yourself, actually running the counter because that's, we're down to a point now to where in order just to have regular day-to-day business, that's what it takes, and I appreciate that and I thank you. Madam Auditor, I am also aware of things that you've done, like now that you've had to be buying all your own stuff, stationary and stuff for your department out of your own pocket to make it work. At some point, there comes a time where you've taken all you can take, and we have to figure out how to make the whole package work. And at this point, we had a little bit of money extra, no such thing as money extra, but money that had, was unaccounted for that came in, and in order to make the department's work and function in a manner where we can keep it going, I think we had to do this. And if we are not able to make the ends meet on the next year, there will be other cuts. I just believe that we are doing a correction here because we see that this is what's needed in order to make and meet the minimum standards that is required by law to get the job done. So we probably have to make adjustments elsewhere if that becomes the case. But either which way, we're faced with it today, and thank you for all the work that you've done and all the extra that you're doing and putting in of your own these days. With that being said, is there any further comments?
No.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Oppose?
Nay.
Okay, the motion passes. That hearing is closed. Is there anything further to come before this board?
Mr. Chair, I move that we adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adjourn. Hearing no discussion, we are adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody.